Twenty-two, six o'clock. This meeting will be conducted via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSAs, Section four oh three B two D and Section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended May third, twenty twenty-two. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting ID eight seven three four six six nine one eight three four and password three four two nine one zero or five zero or five via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the city of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under email, City Department, City Council. Councilor Brink will be leading the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. I ask that everybody else mute your computers and she will have the floor. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'm going to turn the moment of silence over to Mayor Mistracchio.
Thank you, Councilor Brink. Um, a string of shootings left at least fifteen people dead and more than sixty-nine others wounded in eight states this past weekend. One hundred and fifty-six days into twenty twenty-two, our country has seen now seen at least two hundred and forty-six mass shootings. Since May fourteenth, when a racist attack at a Buffalo, New York supermarket took the lives of ten people, there have been at least four dozen mass shootings. That includes the attack on Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas, that left nineteen students and two teachers dead. Tonight, we remember and mourn all of these victims and pledge, as elected officials, to do whatever is necessary to keep our children and citizens safe from gun violence. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call. Councilor Brink.
Present.
Councilor Martell.
Present.
Councilor Hanselman.
Present.
Councilor Stackpole.
Present.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Hurleye is absent with, oh, she's there. You did it, Maura. Calling the roll, are you present?
I look like I've been in a concession stand, but yeah, sure. I'm present.
You look great. And I am Anne Marie Mistracchio, Mayor of City of Sanford. This evening, we're joined by Stephen Buck, the City Manager, and Larissa Ricketts, the Manager's Executive Assistant. First item on the agenda are the minutes. We have three, um, uh, different minutes to approve. Twenty-two dash two nine five dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council held on Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Brink, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Martell. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Councilor Brink?
Yes.
Councilor Martell?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurleye?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Twenty-two dash two nine four dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Brink. If any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Councilor Brink?
Yes.
Councilor Martell?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurleye?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash two nine seven dash zero one, order to approve the minutes from the special City Council meeting held on Tuesday, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, with the correction that, that the minutes reflect that Deputy Mayor Hurleye was not present and that the vote was four to zero. Could I have a motion to approve with that correction, please?
Move we approve as corrected.
Sorry.
That was a motion by Councilor Stackpole, a second by Councilor Martell. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. Councilor Brink?
Yes.
Councilor Martell?
Yes.
Councilor Hanselman?
Um, yes. Sorry, I couldn't remember if Councilor Martell joined us at that meeting. He was, but he was.
Oh, wait, you weren't at, wait, who wasn't there? Wait a minute, let me go back. Jonathan, you're gonna have to abstain, I'm sorry.
Okay.
When I, it was my fault. I should, yeah, yeah, Councilor Brink was a yes, Councilor Martell is a withdraw your yes and it becomes an abstention because you weren't present.
Okay.
Councilor Hanselman?
Yes.
You're welcome. Is a yes? Councilor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurleye?
Abstain.
Abstains and I am also a yes. That is four in favor with two abstentions. And I am looking forward to when we meet in person, we can raise our hands. I know it gets tiresome to do this, but. Mayor's Report. And you know, it's funny, I didn't think I had a lot and I don't have a ton, but I have a few things that I wanted to mention this evening. Uh, the first thing is that, um, the Bike Fest Parade, the Pride Picnic, Farmer's Market, there were all kinds of yard sales. It was a busy weekend in Sanford and it was really nice to see everybody out and about enjoying the beautiful weather. Uh, Governor Mills came to Sanford on Memorial Day where, which saw the return of our Memorial Day Parade. She marched in the parade and spoke at the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery. It was a really, the whole, the whole day was, was really well done by the, um, the groups that put them on. And the governor has promised to return soon to, um, meet with city leaders, um, as she continues her sixteen-county tour. So she's assured me she'll be back. Uh, the deputy mayor and I will be, um, heading to Westbrook tomorrow for an in-person meeting of, of mayors who are members of the Mayor's Coalition and we're discussing the future direction of the organization. And I have one other item, um, at a pride, at a pride flag raising ceremony in Agunkwit last week, Governor Janet Mills declared June as Pride Month in Maine. And I've received a request that Sanford also join in the celebration of Pride Month, raise the rainbow flag and recognize our community as welcoming and safe for all LGBTQ people. And I will put this on the June twenty-first agenda for council action and ask that we fly the flag for one week. Unless there would be a unanimous vote to add it to the agenda tonight and we can wait to do that, if we have time at the end, if somebody wants to do that, but it would need a unanimous vote to do that. We don't need to, but I just wanted to, um, alert everyone that that was my plan for the, for the next meeting. And I think that's all I have. Um, any, there, I don't think there were any subcommittee reports. Any counselors have anything that they want to talk about? Okay, then we will go to the City Manager's Report.
Thank you. To start off this evening's report, Mineral Extraction Task Force, we just completed our thirteenth meeting of the draft ordinances to Chapters two eighty, one forty-nine, and one twenty, uh, which will convert the city's long-term, five-year permit process for gravel pits to an annual license, complete with annual inspections. The outcomes of the last review are being compiled for a final submission to the task force on June twenty-ninth, uh, with the anticipated presentation, uh, by the task force, um, by myself, for the City Council on, for the, uh, that should be, yeah, the July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. But given a consensus and a voted directive, the amendments to Chapter two eighty would then be sent forth to the Planning Board for a public hearing and for the Planning Board to produce a recommendation to the City Council, with or without amendments, uh, for enactment as Sanford's new ordinance for the licensing of business operations for mineral extraction slash gravel pits. City Council will perform a concurrent review of the amendments, Chapter one forty-nine, which is licensing, uh, as well as, uh, Chapter one twenty, which is fees. The fee is yet to be finalized by the task force for recommendations pending a continued negotiation with the city's selected engineering firm of Wright Pierce, uh, selected for the purposes of inspection for mineral extraction operations. The city is seeking a lowered cost for the annual LiDAR surveys performed by drones as the primary monitoring mechanism for the compliance for the annual relicensing operations. The current quote we have for the services is, uh, far too expensive, we believe is too extensive, uh, so I've sent that out to the task force members for their review as well, especially for the industry that, which believes that they could, uh, obtain a, uh, more favorable cost. So we're gonna give opportunities on that as well. Uh, but again, at the end of the day, the only thing that the city can't do in-house is the LiDAR, uh, flyovers. So we're, we're seeking a cost-effective way to perform those. Observations out of the new draft ordinances are comprehensive in their approach to licensing mineral extractions and have been thoroughly vetted by the entire task force membership. It really has been a strong task force and the bit of support, uh, participation has been exceptional as far as, uh, working on the ordinances. Next is the twenty twenty-two ortho imagery through the city's capital improvements program. The twenty twenty-two ortho imagery has been, uh, purchased in cooperation with the Maine Geo Library flights. Total cost for the city is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, with the Sanford Water District and Sewer Districts each contributing forty-three hundred and fifty-seven dollars each, bringing our net cost down to twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. The imagery that was, uh, was acquired was under ideal conditions, early this spring, you know, leaves off and it, and then the, uh, imagery has passed the initial inspection. They flew over sixteen thousand square fit, square miles, uh, in that flight from York all the way up to Frenchville. Got a schedule of deliverables in there, uh, but long story short, we should get our deliverables by December of this year, uh, that is the contract. And then we will pass that over to our hosting, uh, web hosting solutions and then the new ortho imagery will be available for the public as well as administrative use. But that would give the city, uh, ortho imagery from two thousand twenty-two, two thousand seventeen, two thousand twelve, two thousand seven, and two thousand and five. And we, we use that library, we go back through that extensively, especially working on engineering projects when we're working with, uh, landowners abiding the streets and such, we can go back and look at that imagery over a number of years. Uh, we find that very useful and the two thousand twenty-two imagery, each time we, we get new imagery, is improved, it is sharper, it is more clear, and we're purchasing a higher resolution this time than what we purchased in years, uh, prior to. Our communications, uh, as far as the position is concerned, uh, website development remains on track with draft pages to be released soon, as well as subsites for the airport, police, and fire departments. Votes are being obtained for new photography and aerial imagery that will be used as far as the webs, website, uh, dispersment. Um, to date, the best responses in all mediums, uh, that we have have been those that are of the human interest stories, prime example of which was the recent story of the dedication of, of a city street in the name of Leon Tangway. Press release was picked up by our local Sanford Springvale News, as well as the Boston Chronicle and WC, WCBB five in Boston. Story not, story not only encapsulated Mr. Tangway's story of an American veteran and hero, but also accounted for the Sanford's Small Town Appeal featuring the Third Alarm Diner, as well as the Sanford Mainers in Goodall Park, all within the same s- story. Uh, successes such as these have improved the city's followings as we are observing positive responses on social media platforms, uh, with the advent of more inaccurate information. I've given the link here in the story where you can click to, uh, watch that story. Further story, developments that are pending, uh, the Police Department expansion of Mental Health Division. Uh, we tallied that just, just the other day, there's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars of grants and/or private funding that has been passed to the Police Department towards their expansion of the Mental Health Division, with more in the works coming. So we're doing a positive story on that. Uh, information is coming out on the city's brownfield work and, and its relationship to the pending bond vote in November for the International Woolen Mill to start the project kickoff there. Working on, uh, the label of a green city for the city of Sanford around the solar development here, the LED streetlights, the battery backup that's going into construction, the expansion of the CNG line, uh, compressed natural gas, regional transportation or micro-transit, recycling efforts, the fiber expansion and sustainability efforts. Uh, Jordan is working on those. We have both signed up for the, um, oh, shoot, uh, the, um, you know, there's a, there's a green energy conference coming up, but the state of Maine is putting on, uh, January, uh, June seventeenth, I'll be attending, uh, in person, Jordan will be attending virtually for that. Uh, one of those is, um, entitled, something to the extent of window dressing, so how to get the message out for your community, for what the initiatives are and what can be done, uh, with those, uh, developments. It's a promotion of the Bike Fest. And for the first time, we have radio and electronic postings, so electronic postings are not new, but we're changing how we do those. But for the first time, we're looking at a radio ad for the Police Department because of the eight positions that were going to be vacant there shortly. Um, so we have a contract that, that we're examining for iHeartRadio, uh, to push that out within a drivable distance because we're having extreme difficulty in attracting anybody outside of a drivable, commutable distance for jobs because housing's not available and relocation is near impossible. We have that going, we're examining it for dispatch and public works as well. Other areas current under coordination is, um, Jordan is going to start putting out pre, uh, council meeting notifications, doing highlights, not simply a posting of the agenda, but simply doing highlights of what's coming up in the next, uh, City Council meetings, uh, to, to entice more people to, to attend, uh, and/or participate. And social media, uh, press releases on educational components such as the Fire Department, uh, facilities are ongoing. Next, I wanted to announce the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, the Board of Directors of the Growth Council is pleased to announce that Keith McBride has accepted the position of the next Economic Development Director of the Growth Council with a start date of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, which is next Monday. I will ask Mr. McBride to be present for introductions at the next City Council meeting to be held live in the chambers on June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and I will, uh, present his bio and background at the council meeting at that time. City Council meetings pursuant to the council's current policy as of, was amended on five three, Section six councils following the community levels, uh, attached a map here, we've gone to green at this point in time, I do not anticipate that falling back to yellow and/or red. Uh, and given the fact that the city is, uh, we anticipate the installation of the cooling tower to be done on June thirteenth and fourteenth, so we should have air conditioning in here no later than June fifteenth of this year, which would allow for the City Council to meet live for the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting in the council chambers, uh, for which it's tapping on eighty degrees in there right, right now, I checked just before the meeting started. Now, let's see, Charter Committee, ten-year review, the Charter Committee has completed its review of the two thousand and twelve charter and will next hold a public hearing to review and receive input from the public on the proposed changes and/or amendments. That public hearing is this Thursday, June ninth, at six PM in the City Council chambers. I've attached a Zoom link as well and that's posted on the city's website for, uh, members of the public could zoom into that meeting. We'll be able to see you, we'll be able to hear you, you'll be able to interact with the, uh, the review committee in the chambers, uh, not differently than for school board and/or the pending City Council work. Legal Council has reviewed the proposed amendments and finds no legal or other conflicts as currently drafted. Post-public hearing, the committee will complete its work and seeks to present its recommendation to the City Council for the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two meeting. Uh, this is a full month ahead of schedule. Uh, Malsum River Promenade Project, that were between the main terminal of transportation in the city, we held a public hearing on May nineteenth. It will note that it was relatively poor, poorly attended, uh, but this is a safe routes to school funding, uh, the, these are the improvements to William Oscar Emery Drive, as well as Riverside Ave, uh, that will provide the connectivity from the, uh, YMC area all the way through to, uh, Pioneer Avenue, uh, working to complete the connectivity between the North and Southerly Trail, uh, systems within the city. Uh, I've attached the link to the, our Public Works website, uh, webpage that has the, uh, the posting for the public hearing itself, you can review the video there, uh, as well as the link I've included here. There was extensive discussion centered on the remove, the removal of the roundabout and how pedestrian, uh, safety would be, um, accommodated through that new, newly-designed intersection. Uh, there wasn't any adversity to the, um, the intersection itself, it's just the pedestrian crossings there were noted as being less than favorable, so the design, VHB, who's doing the design on that, we'll go back to the draw, drawing table, uh, as this is at eighty percent design right now and, and come up with new solutions for the pedestrian crossings in that area. And that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Does anybody have any questions for the City Manager before I go on to the next item? Thank you, Steve. Okay, communications presentations. Twenty-two dash two eight six dash zero one, presentations by candidates running to fill vacant City Council seat. Um, Dennis Woodruff, one of the candidates, declined to attend this evening. Michael Termath is here, um, and he will have his, his five minutes in just a moment. I just wanted to also mention that Nathan Hitchcock replied that he would have liked to have come, but he is fulfilling his duties at the Mainers game, opening night at the Mainers is this evening. My understanding, he's on that board and very involved, so he really, he just couldn't be here. I will just draw your attention that he was, he spoke at the May seventeenth council meeting and you can go, um, to the, um, archive and, 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 and bring up that meeting and look at that if you have a question, but this evening, we're gonna hear from Michael Termath. Michael, I'm gonna put, I'm going to, um, turn it over to you, you have five minutes. Thank you for coming this evening.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you for having me, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Good evening to the Sanford City Council for this opportunity to speak to all of you and also to the citizens of Sanford Springville. My name is Michael Termath and I live in Sanford with my spouse Kelly and our three children who attend Sanford Public Schools. Sanford is a great place to live and I've been lucky to have been able to work in the community and to be a soccer coach to my oldest son. Along with being a dad, I'm also a combat veteran for over twenty-five years of service in the United States Army and the Maine Army National Guard. I am presently an active member of the Sanford Veterans of Foreign Wars Post, nine nine three five, here in Sanford. Sanford is a great place to raise a family, but like many other communities, we have our fair share of challenges. I want to tell the citizens of Sanford and Springville that I have great hopes for our community and I want to see it grow and prosper. We are facing tough economic times right now and I hope that we can weather the storm of higher inflation and the rising cost of living. Our elderly citizens and retirees, as well as our friends and neighbors that live and work here, need to feel, need to feel that we will be looking out for them and will not waste their tax dollars. I will work hard for you and give you my best effort. I want to help make the city thrive and flourish so our children and grandchildren can stay here and feel safe and make a good living. As a proven leader in the United States Army, I take challenges head-on. I make sure that everybody gets their voice heard so we can find a positive path forward. All stakeholders in our community should have a chance to say in what happens here in our community. Our city government needs to listen to our citizens' opinions with respect and to see that no one is left out of the important decision-making process. I am determined to help with attracting more businesses coming to our community. Businesses of all sizes should feel welcomed here and city government should ensure that its departments work to help this development and not hinder it. I look forward to working with planning and development efforts to revitalize our downtown and help entrepreneurs and small business ventures seek out funding for startups. We need to help find creative ways to help our homeless population by streamlining access to mental health and drug rehabilitation services that right now, unfortunately, are lacking. Our first responders need to feel supported by the city as well. Nothing gets done in a community unless all citizens work together and its leaders listen and encourage cooperation. My background not only includes civil service, but I also have a business background that I'll be bringing to the office. During my campaign, I've been out in the community, talking to everyone from homeowners, business owners, and seniors alike. I've heard from the people themselves on what they feel and where they think improvement is needed to help our community continue to prosper and grow. I appreciate all their thoughts and I have listened to each and every one of them with great enthusiasm. So please remember, on Tuesday, June fourteenth, there is only one choice on the ballot, that is the vote for Termath for City Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Termath, and I will just reiterate that their absentee voting is still occurring in City Hall in, on the second floor in the rear, just follow the signs. Um, and Election Day is next Tuesday. Thank you. Public participation. This is for items that are not on the agenda. Um, can we, just let me see everybody, Steve, or whoever, just so that I can see if anybody's got their hand up. I didn't get any notification ahead of time that there was gonna be anybody to speak, but I don't see any hands, so I will continue on with the agenda. Next item on the agenda, public hearing. City Council will take public comment on the following. Twenty-two dash four, two four eight dash zero one. The Sanford City Council will hold a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Sanford City Ordinance to add an ordinance titled Parking Ticket Enforcement. I will declare the public hearing open and I'm going to ask Steve to start this off and explain why this is on here again. Not a mistake?
Yes, uh, so it was submitted to the local paper, uh, it was not published, uh, for that edition as it was, as was anticipated. Uh, the paper made us aware of that, uh, after the public hearing had, had taken place. The city had to repost the public hearing that, uh, has been reposted and has been published, uh, so we're starting the process over to ensure that the public process with notification, um, fulfills all, all aspects as required under state law. Uh, and with that, if you want a further explanation, I can turn it over to Chief Anderson, who is here with us tonight, that can discuss with you the issues that are trying to be addressed by this amendment to our pre-existing ordinance.
Well, I suggest that we allow, uh, Chief Anderson to do that because there may be people who are listening or watched this meeting who didn't watch the one previous, so nothing wrong with hearing it twice. So go ahead, Chief Anderson.
All right, good evening. So I'm just gonna run through this rather, rather quickly. Our current ticket flow for a parking ticket is, uh, either someone pays the ticket or if it is unpaid, we mail a notice to the registered owner. And then if it's still not paid, we send a second notice after we check the address in our in-house database. And if it's unpaid, again, after thirty days, the ticket is filed as uncollected. It hasn't been very productive, the city is not collecting literally thousands of dollars a year in, in parking ticket fines. And, and I think one of the catalysts was for those folks who are, um, responsible and paid their parking tickets, it's a little unfair to them. So we suggested some parking ticket ordinance change and it specifically dials into two forty-five ninety-six, which is the violations of, violations and penalties of the parking ticket ordinance. And what it would do is increase the fine, it would double the fine if the original parking ticket isn't paid within thirty days as an incentive for those folks to just get it paid up. And then if a second parking ticket is issued to the same person, they would receive a phone call or a response by a police officer to initiate some dialogue as to why the parking tickets are being unpaid and help resolve the parking issue if there is one. And at the receipt of a third parking ticket for the same, for the same vehicle, the vehicle could be towed and the registered owner would be responsible for, for paying the storage fees and release fees of the tow company as well as for paying the parking ticket. Just a couple of minor changes to two forty-five ninety-six, we'd be illuminating that we would double the fine, um, with multiple unpaid parking tickets. And then in Section two forty-five, one oh six, five and six, when according to Police Department records, a vehicle has three unpaid parking tickets, the vehicle is parked in a public way or city-controlled property, it could be, it could be towed. And when according to public, I'm sorry, when according to Police Department records, a vehicle has two unpaid parking tickets and an officer is citing the vehicle for a third time, the vehicle could be towed at that point as well. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, then I will declare the public hearing closed. Consent agenda, there is nothing on the consent agenda this evening. Old business, there is none. New business?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Hanselman?
In light of the fact that our next council meeting is just about one week, uh, away from the end of Pride Month, I'd like to make a motion that we discuss, uh, hanging a pride flag at City Hall sooner than later and put it on tonight's agenda if possible.
Okay, that is a motion then to put, uh, put the item on the, the agenda for this evening. It will need a unanimous vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, so, uh, motion by Councilor Hanselman, a second by Councilor Brink, everybody understands what this is, is to discuss the pride flag being flown in front of City Hall. Everybody understands what this is, is to discuss the pride flag being flown in front of City Hall. I will then, unless there's more discussion, then I'll just call the vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
No.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole? Deputy Mayor, that was a yes. I could see your mouth even though I didn't hear it. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I am also a yes, but that did not receive a unanimous vote. It was five in favor and one opposed, so that item will not be on the agenda this evening, but it will be on, on the twenty-first, where we have that same opportunity to accomplish what it is you wanted to this evening. Thank you, Counselor Hanselman. Okay. New business. Twenty-two dash two-four-nine dash zero-one. The City Council of the City of Sanford hereby ordains a new ordinance titled Parking Ticket Enforcement. This item must be read on two separate days. This is the first reading. Any discussion by the council or any questions? I think we've seen this before. I see, so let me just first make sure there's no counselors that have anything that they'd like to say. No hands, then I will call on the public, and I see that there is a member of the public, Diane Connolly, who wishes to speak on this item. Go ahead, Diane.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. This is Diane Connolly of Springville. Question for the police chief and/or you. How many tickets, what's the amount that's in arrears? And how do they plan to address that, or do we whitewash it and start from the beginning?
Chief Anderson, go ahead. Because I can't answer that one.
Good evening. I don't have the exact amount in the arrears. It literally is thousands of dollars, depending on how far, how many years back you go. We really, I don't feel comfortable that we wouldn't act something for folks who have had violations previous to this ordinance. So I think we probably would start from here and move forward. It would be the safest bet.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions about this item? Then I think we'll go on, because it will be on the agenda of the twenty-first, of June twenty-first, for us to act on it. Twenty-two dash two-nine-three dash zero-one. Order to transfer, transfer unrealized spending from the Department of Public Works' annual operations and maintenance budget to the roadway capital improvement program, CIP, for light capital paving on Sanford and Springville's streets and roads. I'm going to ask, I think is Public Works Director here this evening, Steve, to present this?
Yes, I am.
Yes.
Oh, there he is. There's Matt Hill. I'm going to turn it over to you, Matt, before we ask for a motion, okay?
Thank you. Over the past several years, Public Works has been struggling to retain and attract employees. The city union, the city and the union recently made great strides to improve this through our most recent negotiation process. These labor shortages have created a negative reinforcement cycle where employees remaining have an increased operations and maintenance workload, where we can continue to fall behind. As a result of several positions not being filled this year, the Public Works Department projects that there will be an unrealized budget available at the end of this fiscal year. In years past, the department has worked quickly to put these funds to good use, including vital improvements in the DPW facilities, including repairs, necessary things that needed to be done, as well as light capital paving projects for Sanford and Springville streets. The planning and execution of these efforts are typically constrained as the time between the end of the winter season, where large amounts of overtime are sometimes necessary to respond to winter emergencies. The time when the paving plants open and the end of our fiscal year is relatively short, which is basically mid to late April through June. Contractors and utility schedules are also a limiting factor, and often several weeks' notices are not enough to adequately plan and coordinate complex operations. The Department of Public Works therefore proposes, too, with the consent of the City Council, transfer unrealized Public Works' annual operations maintenance spending from fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two to the roadway capital improvement program, where we could expend these funds during the course of the 2022 construction season for light capital paving. There's a long list of minor streets and roads that would benefit from this light capital paving, which is a three-quarter inch hot-mix overlay. Our current projections affirmed by the Finance Department indicate we can get the following streets addressed with light capital paving, which is School Street from Washington to Rushton, both ends of Rushton Street, High Street from Washington North Ave, Pioneer Avenue from Washington Emery, Beulah Street, and the bottom of Hanson's Ridge Road. Not including the estimate. We've got, we've got obviously several other streets that we could do this on. The department proposes to utilize these unrealized funds to both support the infrastructure of the City of Sanford, but also to address the burden on the Public Works Department for continuous roadway maintenance issues such as pothole complaints. Dedicating any available funds to this purpose on an annual basis would have a tangible effect on the city's roadway quality and the department's workload. Roadways paved with three-quarter light capital paving are not subject to the city's three- or five-year payment moratorium program, thus lessening potential complications from utility involvement.
Thank you, Matt. And before the council starts discussion, I'm just going to ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
I can't, Bob. I saw Bob's mouth moving first, but you were still muted, so I don't know if you're having problems with your audio. Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Now I can, yes.
Yeah. All right. I'm using my spacebar to jump in and out and whatever. I'll unmute here for a minute.
So I will second that.
Okay. So the motion was by Counselor Stackpole and a second by Counselor Martell. Discussion by the council. Can I just say to start the discussion off that I'm really excited to see these? And I know probably people are going to be checking the list to see if there are streets on there. And I like that you're just, you're talking about doing this every year, and I think it can really make a difference in doing exactly what you said, making it less about filling potholes and about trying to not have as many potholes every year. So I know it's a really big issue, and I appreciate that we're going to use the money this way. Counselors, any comments? Counselor Hanselman, your hand is up. Go ahead.
Thank you. A couple of things, but one, Matt, and it's mentioned in the presentation briefly, but so folks at home are wondering why their road isn't listed here. Can you just briefly reiterate the piece about you choose streets based on their index? And then, you know, there's a plan to it. It's not necessarily that somebody on Mitchell Street's been bugging endlessly, but there's actually some data and some numbers that help support that plan of action?
Yes. So there is a, there was a pavement conditions index performed in 2016 and a report in 2017, which basically gave the highest cost-benefit value to each of the streets throughout the city based on their condition, the number of vehicle trips that were on them, the number of people that lived on them, and the cost, the relative cost to repair the street correctly. That basically put all the streets in order. To say that we're following that list, you know, top to bottom is not true, but it is a good indicator of, you know, what's, what's the highest to lowest cost-benefit. That being said, it's just a tool. There are some streets where, honestly, we're being called out to do potholes so many times that it's just becoming unrealistic to just be out there every other day with pothole complaints. So some of those streets, you know, are on this list. It's, it's not a purely scientific method. There is, you know, social studies wrapped up in these decisions. But I can tell you, and I'm sure many people are aware, that the streets that are kind of foremost on those lists are some of our roughest existing streets remaining. In some cases, we're just trying to hold them over until we can get in there with full reconstruction dollars. In other cases, you know, we're just looking for a Band-Aid because we're not really sure. We still have a lot of engineering and planning to do before we can address them properly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I see the city manager's hand is up. Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, thank you. In discussing the finances, as Ronnie and I, our finance director sat again last week, we're very comfortable that there should be resources in the amount of $185,000, but our finance director is asking, and I concur with that analysis, that council consider this, this motion to, to be a not-to-exceed $200,000 as far as the year-end transfer. As we look at our finances overall, we are going to, the city is going to finish strong this year as far as having an unexceeded fund balance, as far as operational resources from all departments are concerned, that will lapse to fund balance, as well as gleaming revenues in excess of what we had anticipated this year that will also gleam to fund balance. I'm going to bring recognition to you on the, at the next council meeting as far as impacts that we're seeing relative to petroleum price. When we reran the same volumes of petroleum that we have in our budget currently, as has been accepted by the City Council, and brought those to, to, well, when I say today's rates, it was last, last week, it's gone up even since then, it's a quarter of a million-dollar impact that you're, that we're seeing across all departments just from petroleum alone. Sat with Public Works just this week, salt prices doubled from current to, to, from last year to what is projected that we're going to be able to buy for again. Our fleet of F-seven-fifties that had been ordered nearly two years ago have just been turned back to us. The company's not even, Ford's not getting to produce the units for us. We're searching for other solutions. So it just, it goes on and on and on. The recommendation is that the not-to-exceed $200,000, all other elements of those, we're seeking to preserve those to go through next year's budget, as well as provide a cushion and a buffer for these economic times without raising any additional taxation. We have it now. We'll preserve it so that we don't raise additional taxation to get through this next bump in the road, which is our next ensuing fiscal year. Thank you.
Okay. So you want, okay.
I'd like to have modification of the motion for, for a not-to-exceed $200,000.
Okay. So I will ask, we didn't have a motion at all. Oh, go ahead. Wait a minute. Jonathan, is, are you going to ask a question about the presentation? Because I can make, we can have the motion first, and then you can, we're certainly going to have time for discussion, if that's okay? Because I don't think we have a motion on the table right now, do we?
Yeah, I think we do.
We do.
We do?
Yeah.
So we need to have it amended? I thought I didn't, all right.
Yeah, I made the motion. You couldn't hear me. And then we had, we got sidetracked a little bit.
Did it get seconded? Yes?
Yes.
Counselor Martell? Oh, okay. Thank you. I'm, I get, if it goes on too long, I forget. Okay. So we would need to amend the motion.
Can I make the, an amendment to the motion that it be in a not-to-exceed $200,000?
That is a motion by, to amend that, the motion, the original motion? And is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. I think you got that first. Okay. We have a motion and an amendment on the table. Counselor Martell, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yes, I just had a question around that amount. Will that cover the anticipated work that's going to be worked on those particular streets that are listed, or will that list also change?
According to the current estimates we have from our paving contractors being Dayton and Pike, it will cover the first part of the list, stopping at the, stopping at the words "not included", which is emboldened in yellow on your screen. So it's School, Rushton, High, Pioneer, Beulah, and hence the bottom, like all the, all the limits on those particular streets, but it should cover those.
Okay. Thank you.
And.
All right. So is there any other discussion before we vote? We'll vote on the amendment first?
If I could add just one thing?
Go ahead, Matt. Yeah, go ahead.
The, the, the choice to invest in 2019 and 2020 in our Streets and Roads is now looking like a really good decision because of, you know, where we're at. This, that was the right time, and we got it for the right price.
Thank you, Matt. I agree with that. Okay. So we, the first is the amendment to put a limit of $200,000 on the, the transfer of unrealized spending. So I will call the vote on that amendment. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. So now we will vote on the entire motion? Any more discussion before I call the vote? Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Get busy plow, doing those roads, please, fixing them. It'll be so nice to drive up Hanson's Ridge and have that edge, that, that beginning, you know, not have to swerve. So I know a lot of people feel the same way, Matt, so good luck. Okay. Twenty-two dash two-nine-eight dash zero-one. Order to accept a proposal from Aceto Landscape Architects, ALA, for the design, bid documents, and plans and construction administration of a project to improve the aesthetics of the roundabout at Routes 109 and 4 in Sanford. Is Matt going to present this as well, Steve?
Yes, please. So this is at the council's request as far as doing an examination of the roundabout, and I'll let Matt speak to the scope as far as the use of Aceto Landscape Architects.
Thank you. Yes, this was at the council's request as directed by the city manager. We reached out to Aceto Landscape Architecture. They have notably in the past done quite a bit of pro bono work for the city, helping to realize some visualizations, notably for the Mouse and Promenade. And part of that spurred initiative towards our raised-grant application. So they, they provided through the Trails Committee some, some vital visualizations to the city and have really proven themselves to be, you know, excellent professionals. So we felt confident in reaching out to them in order to procure a proposal for the redesign and reconstruction of the roundabout at Route 4 and 109. Some of the comments I've received to this, on this to date, that intersection was reconstructed by the Maine Department of Transportation. The city did participate in that, as well as utilizing some, some transportation impact funds, I believe, from local businesses when that program was still ongoing. The intersection was reconstructed as a roundabout instead of a traditional four-way signal. That being said, though, Maine DOT does not really have the, the skin in the game that the city has on making that roundabout look sharp. We have notably tried to maintain in the past. We've worked with the Rotary Club, who did do a, a good job with their own proposal, but ultimately, it is very difficult to maintain out there. It's hot, it's dry, it's windy, it's sandy, there's vehicles circulating. And Maine DOT has some restrictions on the roundabout where they don't want anything of a certain height out there within their clear zone. They don't want anything that would attract someone to walk into the middle of the roundabout. They don't want any signs that are not regulatory or warning signs in the middle. Other, other groups have volunteered to participate in, in reconstructing it, but the, you know, some of their concessions they've asked for is, you know, we, Sanford Roundabout brought to you by, you know, so-and-so, and Maine DOT does not allow that. So that being said, we reached out to Aceto for kind of a, a full soup-to-nuts proposal, which you see here in front of you. And this would basically do the design. It would have the public participation wrapped up into it. They would generate contract documents for a contractor to bid on, and then they would take us through the award and also perform some contract administration and construction inspection. So the total fee was not to exceed fifteen thousand five hundred, or sorry, a fixed fee of fifteen thousand five hundred, which in general is, is a pretty good price. Usually, you know, designs are about 10% of construction cost. It's hard to say, as this is not really any pavement where that's going to fall. But they do a basic breakdown of where they are for each of the designs, the developments, things like that. And I think one of the reasons some of the previous efforts have fallen short is they have been done by kind of smaller efforts, community groups. We're hoping to predominantly make this like a hardscape. Are there going to be some green elements to it? Absolutely. But we're going to come at it with the full force of the city behind it. There is a water main that runs below this roundabout, like directly below the green space. So I think there might be some opportunity there to work with the Sanford Water District to, to get a service in there, create some, you know, automated irrigation so that we can stop having to, you know, go out and water that in the middle of traffic. So, you know, a professional application and, you know, a, a full, full design. full design.
Okay. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve and a second, and then we'll discuss.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Brink to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. Discussion by the council. I see two hands, we will write up. Counselor Hanselman first, yours was up there first.
So, and, um, you know, I, I get excited about the idea of getting that roundabout cleaned up. It is, um, the entrance to our community and it, it does feel, even after efforts the folks have made, which I really have appreciated, it does feel like it's a kind of disrepair and a sad entrance to the city. That being said, I'm, I am concerned about cost, um, not that the 15,000 is exorbitant, but of course the, um, budget, I, you know, for the actual work to be done and how we would, it would come under our CIP presumably is how we would, or we'll just deal with that when we see the budget. Okay, thank you, Steve. And then my last thing, Matt, if you could just reiterate for me, in terms of signage, when you talk about only regulatory signs being allowed in the roundabout, does that mean we couldn't put a welcome to Sanford, visit our downtown, like we can't do anything fun like that at all?
I, I really wish we could. Maine DOT, even though they, uh, are not out there maintaining it all the time, have some pretty strict rules about it. We can propose anything, but it's, it's completely up to them whether they say yes or no. So, um, there is, like I said, it's, it's within the clear zone, so there's, you know, certain objects. But again, we can't also have anything else that might bring somebody to the middle of the roundabout. They just don't want any pedestrian traffic out there, so.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Counselor Martel?
Yes, uh, I have some similar concerns around costs and then also, um, just a conceptual question. It sounds like what can be done is extremely limited. Did, did they provide any sort of just real high level, what kinds of things they might propose?
Uh, I, I can read kind of the restrictions that Maine DOT, uh, put out there, but no, they didn't, they didn't provide any, you know, concepts. I did do some quick searches on Google on, on, uh, you know, kind of interesting roundabout designs, and there's everything out there. We, we had notably looked at some neat ones when we were considering a roundabout of the intersection of 109 and 99. Uh, cause that one can be seen very frequently from the air as it's basically like on approach to Sanford Airport. So we were looking at some neat ones there, but I'm not sure. You know, it's, it's kind of a fine line, to be honest with you, like, i- if you create like a, you know, a fountain water display, does DOT want people's eyes, everyone's eyes to be drawn to the middle of the roundabout? You know, it's probably not a good idea. So, um, it, it is, it's kind of a weird situation where it's like you want it to look good, but you don't want it to be something where it's stared at for the wrong reason, I guess. Or the right reason.
Right, I'm just concerned, you know, we're giving them 15 grand and basically they'll come back, well, you can put grass there, so.
We could put grass there, you know, that's, we could just make it a, you know, a patch of grass and, and irrigate it. And that doesn't cost 15,000.
Right.
Uh, Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, Counselor Martel, I, I just want to share that, um, if you haven't seen some of the, um, conceptual plans that Acedo has helped the city with, it might help, um, understand the depths of their knowledge base and some of the work that they do, being forced ideas. You know, I, I really do feel confident that the product we would get from them would, would give us some options, and, and they did help on that Mouse and Way Promenade as well as some other things that, um, their work products have been very helpful, I think, in making decisions for us.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
It's, it's not a bad point, but it's also, you know, it's kind of a, it's a limited opportunity, it's high visibility, but not too high visibility, you know, it's, it's kind of one of these tricky situations.
Any other counselors have a question? Cause I ha, oh, Steve, go ahead and then I have a question.
Yeah, so, uh, when we speak of hardscape, it, you know, it's too, of course, Acedo will, will take this much, much further, but you know, get, getting a blend of some plantings and some hardscaping in there such that, you know, everything survives at the end of it, and it's not, it's not solely dependent upon the vegetative aspects of that. So that's part of the original concept. And today, nobody likes my idea of colored stone to make, you know, the, the world's largest hamburger in a roundabout. We've been known for that, fine tosser, nobody's buying on it. I recommend you go forward with an engineering contract.
How about a donut, Steve?
Oh.
Sure, sure. Or a whoopee pie.
They probably wouldn't let us do that. I have, I have one question before we vote on this. Is there any chance that they might roll into this whole proposal and do something, a little plan for the midtown mall stairway? You know?
I can ask the question, I, I, it would be an additional charge, I'm sure, but.
Are you sure? They might do it for us. Anyway, you can only ask, but that, that is driving me crazy, that particular way that that looks, and it could, I don't think it needs a ton of work, just needs a little advice on what to put there. And they're landscapers, right? Acedo Landscape Architects.
The Landscape Architects, yep.
Right, just ask them, Matt. Never hurt, my mother always told me it never hurts to ask.
It hurts to ask.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion by the council? And I will call the vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. 22-299-01, orders to approve street closings for the 3rd of Jul-, 3rd, July 3rd block party and 4th of July parade. I think I'm just gonna ask for a motion and a second on this, and then I'll just have the explanation, cause I'm pretty sure we're gonna pass this one.
So moved.
A motion by Counselor Stackpole and a second by?
Jonathan.
Jonathan, yeah.
Counselor Martel, okay. Go ahead, I think, is Chief Anderson gonna do this, or are you gonna do it, Steve? Or is Brady doing it?
Brady Lloyd, our Parks and Recreation Director is handling this.
That'll be me.
Okay, Brady.
Um, I have one thing to add to this that is not in the agenda, and it's that the rain date is going to be July 2nd. Um, and that's because of, that's how it fits into the firework company's schedule. Um, they're booked on the 4th, so the rain date will be July 2nd, which is the Saturday before what we're proposing. Um, but we're looking to close the streets from William Oscar Henry Drive and River Street all the way down to William Oscar Henry Drive and Lincoln Street. And then the side streets that intersect will be Go and Park Drive, Front Street and Summer Street. I do just want to note that Lincoln Street will remain open. You can come down that street and take a right, but, um, you can't take a left. It'll be closed on William Oscar Henry Drive right there. Also noted is that there will be posted parking on side streets around this area so that EMS can get in and out if need be. The closure is gonna start around 3 o'clock on the Saturday. Um, vendors will be ready to open around 4. The water ski show warmups will be around 6:30, the, or 6 o'clock, and the start of the show starts at 6:30. And then the band Fireball will be playing at the Rotary around 7:30 after the ski show. And then fireworks are set to go around 9 PM or once it's dark enough. Any questions on July 3rd?
I just have a question because I was told that the vendors were gonna be from 2 o'clock on.
Yep, we're gonna push that back a little bit.
So that's not, it's not gonna be 2 o'clock, it's gonna be 4 o'clock.
Well, it, we're telling them that they can get there around 2 o'clock, but really the start of this, from what I was told after our safety meeting, is that it typically starts around 4 PM.
Okay, alright.
And then vendors also close down around 8:30.
Yep.
I do see a question.
Uh, Counselor Martel, you have your hand up?
Yeah, people, people do tend to get there pretty early. So, um, I, I think there's usually a fair crowd at 2:00 in the afternoon. Is there a ski show or anything this time around?
Yes, um, that starts at, the, the warmups are at 6 PM and the actual show is planned to go from 6:30 to 7:30 or so.
Okay, so the, the 2 o'clock time for the vendors, is that the normal time that has been in the past, or were, were they allowed to set up earlier?
I don't have the answer to that question, not having, um, been involved in this event. But from what I was told-
I can tell you that it's been different for different years. There were years where things were going on all afternoon way up onto Go and Park Drive. And in the, and then we would have like, um, other things going on in the, in the the field there on, off of Go and Park Drive. So I think that what he's saying is that, excuse me, that this is how they're going to do it this year? I understand that. I just wanna make sure that, that, that the vendors understand what the start time is.
Yep, and also-
I don't want them to come at 2 o'clock and then not be told, be told that they can't, because I had heard specifically that it was a 2 o'clock.
And also, as we get a little closer, there will be communication from our depart, once we have more registrations, there will be communication from our department to the vendors as to, um, exactly when to show up.
And what is the date that the vendors have to get their applications in by?
Um, we're asking the June 17th, I believe is, Friday in two weeks. But, um, it's a, that's a soft deadline, so if, if we have-
Could be here.
If we have available space, then we will, um, continue registration throughout.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any other discussion? Uh, call the vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Looking forward to it.
And, Madam Mayor, am I able to speak on the parade too?
Oh, sure, you wanna talk about the parade? I, I'm sorry, we already voted, but go ahead and talk on the parade.
Just real quick-
I figured that was all the same.
Just real quick, um, the parade's on the 4th of July. Um, that's gonna be starting around Breton Ave. Um, there's side streets that the lineup will be on, and that's Stillson Street, Goodrich Ave, Breton Ave, Maurice Ave, Malcolm Ave, Schuler Street and Carver Street, depending on how many registrations we have. And people are able to register on our website at SanfordRec.com, or they can come into our office at City Hall on Floor 1R. Um, and the theme is Dream, Believe, Achieve. The parade lineup starts at 9 AM and then the parade's gonna kick off at 10 AM. And the grand marshal is going to be Leon Tangue. And that will, um, kind of add to the great story that's been going on. So we're happy that he accepted the, the ask.
Thank you, that's excellent. Happy to hear that. Any other comments about, that's pretty much standard, like, we're all pretty familiar with that parade. So other than Leon being the, the marshal, that was pretty much what we expected, so.
Thank you.
It'll be your fir-, 1st, 4th of July parade in Sanford. Good luck.
Yeah, well, thank you.
I was gonna say you'd be pulling out your hair, but not a problem. Sorry. Um, sorry. Okay, we voted on that one, so 22-300-01, order to authorize a consent agreement and order for a reduced front setback and necessary permits for a redevelopment project located at 19 Bodwell Street and authorize the city manager to sign the consent agreement and order on the city council's behalf. Steve, are you gonna present that or Ian this evening?
I'm gonna ask our Community Development Director, Ian Housefield, to present on this, as he's been working with the party and interest, uh, that seeks to purchase the property for, for redevelopment.
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, Ian.
Thank you. Um, so this is the case, it's 19 Bodwell Street, and we've been discussing a, uh, purchase and sale agreement with, uh, a developer, um, Carl Wilbur, who's named on the, um, uh, the consent agreement. Uh, the consent agreement itself is a, uh, a, an unusual, uh, development tool. Um, but it's a very much a valid one. What it does in this case is it's going to buy some time, uh, for the developer, uh, to submit a main housing, uh, affordable, um, application. Um, one of the requirements of the application is that it meets, um, all zoning requirements. And in this particular case, um, in the urban zone, there, um, is usually a uniform setback. Um, but in this case, uh, because, um, they're, one of the properties and this property itself are setback a little bit further from the street, um, that there is no uniform setback, and, uh, the setback would therefore be, uh, 20 feet. And because it's 20 feet, it would, um, throw off the development potential for a housing project and also not meet a, um, a uniform setback standard. So as far as the consent agreement goes, um, this is already underway, um, with the planning board. Uh, the consent agreement orders the, the planning board to conduct the necessary hearings, similar to what you previously discussed with the, um, the, uh, the gravel pits. Um, and then, um, additionally, it, it, it says that, um, the project still needs to meet all other zoning requirements. And then by the time that the project, um, is approved, um, uh, the, the uniform setback standard or how the planning board, um, uh, resolves, uh, the, the issue, um, will be, um, resolved. So, um, ultimately, it's just buying a, a couple months, um, and allows the developer to make this application to main housing for funding.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Brink, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Stackpole. Discussion by the council or questions? I see Counselor Martel's hand is up. Go ahead, Counselor Martel.
Thank you. Um, is there, I was just looking through it, and maybe I missed it, but is there a setback that they're looking to meet? Cause 20 feet's not that much, but I don't want something that's right up against the sidewalk either, cause I don't think that looks good either.
Yeah, I, I measured it, you know, ultimately, it's gonna have to be determined by the code enforcement officer, uh, but it seems to be about nine feet. Um, so that's the uniform setback. So all the buildings are typically within, uh, nine feet setback, um, from the road. Um, so it keeps that, that, that street face at a consistent, um, a consistent distance from the road.
So that would be matching other buildings in the, along that street?
That's correct, that's the intention.
Any other questions by counselors? Being that, then I think we'll vote on this. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. I look forward to something being built in, on that lot.
I look forward to, thank you.
Yes. 22-301-01, resolve to appoint City Manager Steve Buck as Sanford's representative on the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee for July 2022 to June 2024, with the mayor of Sanford designated as his alternate, and to nominate Community Development Director Ian Housefield to represent Senate District 33 on the LPC. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley, a second by Counselor Martel. Questions, or Steve, just, just give us a little background for maybe people that are a little less familiar with the, with, um, the Legislative Policy Committee.
The Legislative Policy, Policy Committee is the advocacy group by the Maine Municipal Association. They have, uh, four people within that division. There's three full-time, uh, paid lobbyists that serve on behalf of, of the municipal association. It's comprised of the 35, uh, senate districts in the state of Maine. There are two representatives that come from each senate district, so there's 70 representatives that come forward from all sizes of communities, big, small, and, and everything in between. Uh, for the city of Sanford, as it is the largest population center and being over 20,000 people within the, uh, Senate District 33, city council gets to appoint one of the two members of that senate district that will go to the LPC. Uh, so the motion would, would so appoint myself and, and uh, designate the alt- alternate as the mayor um, and, and/or his or her um, a designee if, if so named. So, uh, that's been the process for the ten years that, that I've been here. Uh, for example, when, when I was serving in the city of, of Caribou, I ran for the elected uh, seat for that. Second part of this motion uh, would allow for Ian Housefield to go in for Senate District Thirty-three as the second representative. Uh, by nominating him under this process, he would submit his um, resume to, for consideration for election in Senate District Thirty-three. Uh, so his information will go out to all of the communities that are inside of Senate District Thirty-three. They would take that under consideration and they would so vote uh, for either Ian and/or if any other candidates are running within Senate District Thirty-three. Uh, Ian served on the LPC in the short session. Uh, there was a vacancy there when Gary Lamb, who had been longtime serving on the LPC as the second representative, um, moved to the city of, of Hollowell and took the position there. There was a vacancy, and Ian was so appointed to serve on the LPC as that second representative. I will say that we had a very, even though it was a short session, we had a very productive uh, work session in the last legislature, and I wanna give credit to Ian for his work, uh, his continued work. He started in the long session, but he finished it on the short session. This year, that uh, was the formation of the um, land bank for the state of Maine. That now will allow our state to access literally billions of dollars worth of funding uh, to come towards uh, serving on derelict properties and making improvements thereafter. So, uh, if the council accepts the motion as presented here this evening, uh, again, you'd have one appointed position assured there for the LPC, and then you would allow Ian to run for that second seat, um, as so described. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve, and I just wanna make sure that everybody knows that Senate District Thirty-three encompasses Lebanon, Sanford, Sanford-Springvale, Alfred, and Waterboro. Okay, any more discussion by the council? None, then I will call for a vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Twenty-two dash three-zero-three dash zero-one. Order to approve a request for road closure of Main Street, Route one-oh-nine, between Kimball Street and Twombly Road from five PM to eight PM on July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-two, for the Cruising with Friends Classic Car Show. Conditional on submission and approval of a safety plan. There is no rain date planned for this event. Um, I think I'm gonna just let um, this be presented first, and then we'll have a um, of, a, a motion on this. Ian, do you wanna just start this, and then we'll let the chief weigh in?
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to. This is uh, bringing back a really popular event that's been in our community originally um, with the Sanford um, Downtown Legacy Group, as well as in partnership with the Chamber, and Friends of Downtown, who's um, kind of trying to, to re-energize the downtown area and the community as a whole. Um, it wants to bring it back, uh, in, in great part thanks to Kim Stewart, who is with here if there's questions. But Chief Anderson promised to do the heavy lifting on this in terms of presenting the um, road closure request. So, I'll, I'll pass it to him.
Thank you, Ian.
Great, yeah. Um, as you can see from the, from the highlighted event, it's a classic car event. We've run these number, numerous times in the past, closing the road between Washington Street and um, Main Winter and Lebanon. So, the police department has been involved with the Friends of Downtown. It's a collaborative group that works to improve and develop the downtown business community. One of the ideas that came forward was this classic car event. We are very supportive of it, and we agreed that we would organize the traffic control points to shut off the roadway and allow for this event to move forward. And um, we presented a plan, which you have in front of you, which would allow us to close the roads off at, I mean, Main and Lebanon, also at um, Washington and Maine. And then we would monitor, would basically not allow Twombly Road traffic to turn onto Main Street, nor Kimball Street traffic to turn onto Main either. The two ends on Main Street would be maintained by a cruiser, which would allow for uh, other EMS response to the event if it was necessary. Cruises could be slid out of the way. And we would have barricades uh, in support, I'm sure, via Highway Department or Parks and Rec, because they pretty much support every event that we have in the, in the community. And so that's it. We're seeking the council approval to allow us to close the road at that date and time, and we will do our part of the police department.
Thank you, chief. Is there a motion to approve?
We approve.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Any discussion or comments by the, by the council? I don't see any. I'm just excited that the car show's coming back. I know not everybody's into cars, but, you know, it was always such a nice event on a Friday afternoon or evening to go and just walk Main Street and not have any traffic other than anti-cars. So, I'm looking forward to it. And I hope it doesn't rain. So, we have a motion and a second. I will call the vote. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martell?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous vote. Go. Counselor member comments. I will start with Counselor Brink. Do you have anything this evening?
Not this evening, thank you.
Counselor Martell?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, so, on the, on the recent shootings and some of the previous comments, um, I had a conversation with Chief Anderson last week, and I believe the Sanford PD is doing a great job of protecting our schools as well as being prepared in the event if something does happen. Um, that being said, Maine is one of the safest states in the country. Thank you, thanks to our, our current gun laws. So, um, just want people to be aware that how safe the state actually is, and that's uh, primarily due to uh, people being able to protect themselves, uh, so. That's all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I have two um, announcements, a little bit on a personal level, but uh, girls and boys, Spartan Lacrosse both had uh, playoff games this week at Alumni Stadium, which was super exciting. It was great turnout. Our boys did win, and will go on to their second playoff game this Thursday, which is super exciting. The girls unfortunately did not uh, win, but they played a great game. So, just exciting to see our lacrosse um, team really making some inroads in their skill levels. Um, in addition, of course, it is graduation this week. I should, I shouldn't have said that. But anyway, not in respect to my, like, you know, but I'm so proud as an alumni myself, uh, proud Class of Ninety-three alumni, and somebody who really um, believes that the youth are our future. And it's always just heartwarming to watch all the activities, the award evenings, the graduation itself, scholarships. And I just wanna give a shout-out to the kids and their families that may not get uh, awards and scholarship announcements, but boy, they made it to the finish line, and, and that's a big deal. And I also wanna say that, excuse me, Sanford Adult Ed did not get a graduation this year, which was really heartbreaking, but uh, congrats to those folks as well. So, thank you.
Um, Counselor Hanselman, before I go to the next person, where is the lacrosse playoff game?
I believe it's at Cape Elizabeth on Thursday.
Okay. But we can look if, uh, we'll be able to find that information if, if somebody was, wanted to go, they'd be able to find it.
Yes.
And graduation is tomorrow night, correct?
It is, and as I left the field from the lacrosse game this afternoon, they were rolling the chairs onto the field. So, I'm taking that as a sign to be outside.
It's supposed to be okay in the afternoon. And we all know Ian's just gonna cry through the whole thing. Congratulations, Anne, to your daughter.
Yeah. Congratulations. Okay, um, Counselor Stackpole?
Uh, I just wanna say, uh, I, I, it was my honor uh, to have the privilege of being able to walk in the Memorial Day uh, parade. Um, I enjoy that uh, aspect of the job here as a counselor very much, and I was joined by several other uh, city counselors. Um, uh, so uh, uh, it, it's just kind of a, an amazing thing to walk down Main Street. I think I was walking past the uh, towards Memorial Gym, just past the uh, the old junior, junior high school. And you, you just get a real sense of community here. Uh, and again, I, I just consider it an, an honor to be a representative in the parade, and uh, it's a real privilege that I really appreciate having, so thanks very much.
Thank you, Counselor Stackpole. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Uh, probably just a little begging for volunteers tonight. Uh, we're filling in our games pretty well overall, but uh, Saturday night, uh, we have a doubleheader starting at four o'clock, and it would be great if there's any individuals who'd be willing to do, um, to volunteer in the concession stand. Uh, we are definitely shorthanded for that, for that game. Um, you probably need to be there by about three, and with a doubleheader, you could be there till eight, eight-thirty. And I'm sorry for that, but uh, we are looking for a few people just to be in the concession stand. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I don't really have any comments this evening. Uh, future agenda items. Counselor Brink?
I'm not at this time, thank you.
Counselor Martell?
Uh, nothing for tonight, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I have two, although one might be a, a quick conversation, but I'll, I'll leave that near to you to determine. Um, wondering if Property Sub could have a discussion about our ability to once again hang banners across Main Street, um, across from Goodall Library. I know that there was good reason for not doing that in relation to limited access to a bucket truck and some budgetary concerns as well, but if we could just revisit it, um, I think there are organizations that would even be willing to pay uh, a fee if that wasn't being done before. It's one of our few really highly visible areas, and it is uh, been proven as a great way to communicate things going on in towns. Just wanna have that conversation. And then um, solid waste, I'm wondering if we might have a conversation about trial trashcan placement, um, particularly at the Midtown Mall new walkway, and the trees are going in, it looks beautiful. Um, you know, I just think that that could be a great place for folks to sit and, and have lunch, but there are currently trashcans scheduled for that area, as my understanding. Um, and kind of on that same line of thinking, I know that my family business would be really excited about this, and I think there might be others that would be willing to do and adopt a trashcan program, where if we could have a um, city-type trashcan installed that was really heavy and hard to move, that we would be, businesses might be willing to um, be responsible for emptying that trash in their own dumpster, so it wouldn't entail our Parks and Rec Department having to be more um, trashcans, but it would be kind of a city uh, issue-type trashcan. So, I'd love to have those discussions. I apologize neither on subcommittees I'm on, but I'm happy to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, and, and Counselor Hanselman, would it be okay if we added to that discussion uh, for the Solid Waste Committee? Um, uh, dogs, dog places where the dog bag, doggy bags? And I just feel like we are going to be having a wonderful promenade, and people are gonna be walking their dogs, and I think we're at the point now where we need to talk about having um, poop bags and uh, disposal uh, tra- I would, I don't know what you call them, but they're usually specialty kinds of things. And I would like to know that we could do that. And as an, an add-on to yours also, there are two signs, one that says, "Pick up after your dog" in Gateway Park, and a sign that says, "No dogs allowed." And I think they, I would prefer that the "No dogs allowed" one go away, and we leave the one that says, "Pick up after your dog," because if you're taking a walk around there, you're gonna walk through Gateway Park. So, I don't know why it says "No dogs allowed." Um, Counselor Stackpole, agenda items. Nothing. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Nothing.
Okay, and I just had two others. I just would like um, Property Subcommittee to have an update on rail trail use and where we stand and any complaints we've had, or how well things are going maybe. And uh, maybe at, at the next subcommittee meeting, we could also have an update on the West Side Village project. Okay, I think that is nothing else on any, on anyone else's agenda, and I will declare us adjourned, and we'll see you, oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. John, um, Representative Counselor Tuttles, um, burial is next Wednesday, June fifteenth, at eleven AM in uh, the Sanford Veterans Cemetery, Sanford Veteran Cemetery in Springville on Stanley Road, the Southern Maine Cemetery. Okay? Just for those who'd like to attend. Thank you.
Night.
We're in it, we are adjourned. Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.